Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Norristown Council Meeting Tuesday, October 3, 2023. I have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing in my nation under God, indivisible, with the One.
Madam Secretary. Can I have a roll call?
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Rashad Bates?
Here.
Tiffany Henley?
Here.
Dustin Queenen?
Here.
Lauren Hughes?
Here.
Heather Lewis? Thomas LaPera?
Here. I have a motion to approve the previous minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
We had an executive session on litigation. Counsel, any announcements?
I have one. We are having a Halloween trunk-or-treat on October 31 at the Norristown Rec Center on Harding Boulevard from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. So that's twofold. One, bring your kiddos. It's a great safe way to trick-or-treat. It will be a lot of fun. Two, if you would like to be a decorated trunk or have a booth at the trunk-or-treat for the kids, you can contact Tracy Henry, our events coordinator at thenry@norristown.org.
Thank you. Counsel, any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Madam Secretary.
Jenny Cho?
Good chat.
Hi, I'm Jenny Cho, 503 Barbado Street. I attended a Zoom meeting, I guess hosted by Montgomery County. They have plans for a community center in Norristown, so I was just wondering what's Norristown's position in that, you know, in terms of a downtowner, we severely need parking. I'm by the train station, Main Street Train Station, and, you know, there's this huge Montgomery County-owned parking lot that sits vacant for, you know, weeknights and weekends. And, you know, can we, I don't know, can something be done so that, I mean, you know, officially residents can park their cars there? And also, I drive by the Main Street Train Station, and there's like, you know, lots of nonriders populating on the platform, you know. I know it's getting cold soon, winter's upon us, and so what is, where are they gonna, is it gonna, I mean, is this train station, you know, basically going to them, or, you know, who is it for?
Thank you.
Matthew Ritz?
My name is Matthew Ritz, and I've lived at 450 Forest Avenue for over two years now. If Norristown was a person, this council would be the head. You decide where we go, what we do. You and everyone who helps make your policies a reality are the brains of this body. And you've been doing a lot to keep Norristown healthy, from beautification to the business community to mixed-use zoning. But that's like exercising and eating right when you have a massive gaping wound on your leg that you still haven't gone to the doctor for. Norristown's homelessness situation is a wound, and if it isn't addressed, it mars all the good that you've done for Norristown. It needs a bandage in the short term while you wait for the wounds to heal. Have an overnight shelter built for the homeless, or even use an existing building like the jail just for the winter. Stop the bleeding so that Norristown can have time to heal and so that the homeless people don't have to be in the, at the train station. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doris Smith-Starks?
I'm Doris, Doris Smith-Starks. I'm not walking too much because my legs hurt. I'm here on behalf of the prison. I just want to know, where do we stand with it? As I have written to all of my leaders here in Norristown, and I said, if the prison gets torn down, Norristown goes down. Because the prison has made a big impact, and it's history, that whole section as to where I have written to my councils, to all of you, and told yous. And if you take the prison down, you have really taken Norristown down. Because it's a lot of things that has been taken away from Norristown as it is. And so, I really strongly am against the prison being taken down, if it's going to be demolished. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen Brachio?
I just want to read from the Pennsylvania Constitution.
Can you state your address for the minutes?
Townments and Township. Article 1, Section 27 of the Pennsylvania Constitution states that the people have a right to clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. So it belongs to all of us, okay? Even though I don't live in Norristown, I live in Montgomery County, and so I'm very much a part of it. I've lived here all my life. So that, first of all, is you're literally going against the Pennsylvania Constitution. Second of all, it was determined at the HARP meeting that the application was not complete. I know that Mr. Singh disagrees with me, however, regardless of an engineer's report, the answers were not given for the questions. Explanation why rehabilitation reuse plan alteration or stabilization with the intent to market and sell the property was not feasible or desirable. Well, they didn't give an explanation as to why. Ken Lawrence has not said so, and I know that, Tom, you are very much in with Ken Lawrence in this deal. They never really answered the question proposed future use of the lot or the timeline of an implementation of the future use. It came to my attention that somebody wants to put a firehouse there, to shut down all the other firehouses, to put one in that spot, which is totally ridiculous. Marshall Street is so narrow, you have a huge truck that was purchased, you should, I was in real estate at one time, I always tell people, before you buy your furniture, buy your house to make sure you can fit it in there. Well, somebody bought a truck, and you've got no place to put it. Okay? So what are you gonna, how are you gonna do that between Erie and Marshall? You can't. So think about it further. And also, Mr. Hans said he let it slip that the stone has already been sold. I don't know where that money's gonna go, but that company that's gonna demolish it, they got chosen because they're gonna be in with you and Ken and your scam to steal money from Norristown. Because if that stone is valuable, then that stone should have been sold to someone from, and come to Norristown, not to go to you and Ken. And where did get the $5 million to do a firehouse? And why would you shut down three other firehouses? I mean, you're not making any sense, Tom. You're the council here, you're the president here, and Lauren Hughes should be refused from any vote on the prison because she also works as a solicitor for the county. You know, I don't know what you guys are doing. We have a lot of, Tiffany's already been charged with something. You guys are not only up and up.
Give him three minutes.
Is it really my three minutes? I didn't hear any bell go off.
Yeah, I just, it's three minutes.
Well, I don't really trust you because you've lied to my face in the past. Because you're a liar, just as Ken is. Thank you.
Olivia Brady?
Good evening, Council on Norristown. The Erie Street Prison represents an icon to Norristown. Excuse me?
Your address for the minutes, please.
728 Stamford Street, Norristown. The Erie Street Prison represents an icon to Norristown, so much so that they have included it in the paintings representing the town in pictures, it's on the mural, it's on your own website, and it sits proudly on the National List of Historic Places as a member of the Central Historic District. In short, this building is etched in the fabric of Norristown. You all have a decision to make coming up in the next few weeks when the HARP reports their findings, a decision that will determine if this iconic landmark structure will be taken away by the county. Throughout this battle, the county has ascertained that it has preserved many sites and that their record on historic preservation is stellar. That may be for other parts of the county, but for Norristown, not so much. If you do a search on their website for historic preservations, there are several hundred pages of results all about their work, historic buildings in other parts of the county. The Justice Center is pretty much the only Norristown site mentioned. My point is that the county has done little to help with historic preservation within the boundaries of Norristown. Your own comprehensive plan has a whole section about historic preservation and even urges honoring our historic structures. With all this emphasis on preservation and recognizing that their existence is an asset to this community, why would you allow the county to tear down one of its most iconic, important, historic structures in our town? I urge you to deny their request to demolish the prison. I urge you to take a pause to determine how adaptive reuse can be utilized to save the building. Nothing has been done for 40 years, so why rush now? Come to our meeting on October 11, where you can get valuable information regarding the potential of the structure, and tell the county not now. Tell the county that the prison will stand not as a monument to oppression, but as a monument to possibility and reconciliation. Let's work to make the Erie Street Prison the gem at the top of the art street, art hill district. Thank you.
Peggy Della Johnson?
Hi, Peggy Della Stanti, Bridge Forward/Norristown. I have one foot in one town, one foot in the other. I am the canary in the coal mine. Your motivation should be to protect and preserve the riches of this town. You hold the final decision in your hands, and everybody in town knows it. To dismantle that castle and sell the stone would be a historic, would be a historic preservation atrocity and would be unforgivable. Deny, deny, deny that permit. Do something for the passion, with passion. Do something for the beauty of it, the beauty that sits at the top of that hill. Stand up to the county for the community that you were elected to serve. I invite you all to attend the public forum that, I will give you one of these if you will. Thank you. I ran a successful business for 42 years in Norristown, and my mantra was to listen to the people and give the people what they want. Be generous and respected, and respectable to the people that trust you. And we trust you to hold our most valuable piece of real estate in Norristown, I'm sorry, it's the last one. At the, to your highest regard, because once that building is torn down, you cannot go back. It's like when you, when you say something mean and nasty to someone that you love, you cannot take those words back. They, they are etched in a person's soul. That building on Erie Street is etched in the people's soul in this community. That building has character, and it has all of our souls attached to it. I've walked these streets, I've talked to so many people, and people refer to that building as the castle, the castle on the hill. That's what it is. It's unique. Don't throw away, you have gold in your hands, gold. Don't throw it away, and don't betray the trust of the people that elected you to this town. I love this town. I love the community. I was here my whole life, my whole life. They became my family, and that's why I am here at every single meeting, and it's not my first rodeo saving this castle up on the hill. It's not, that could be spectacular, to draw people from all over, the revenue would be amazing. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I cannot read the next name. I'm sorry, but I can't read the next name. I don't know. No. I mean, I could show you what the signature looks like, does anybody remember?
Giuseppe Monticelli?
No.
No?
Two above that, before Jim Waters signed it, and after Peggy. I mean, want me to bring it over? Somebody can tell me who's it is?
Or we can just skip it, and somebody who wasn't heard that wants to be heard can do it after.
How much time did you short me, Tom? Because there is an alarm, and I didn't hear it. You don't like what I was saying, but I'm telling you the truth.
If you keep speaking out of turn, we'll have you removed from the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Just skip it, go to the next one. If somebody wants to make a public comment that was not afforded the right, you can let them.
Tim Waters?
Hello, everybody. How you doing? Tim Waters, Hamilton Street, the wet end, two years in a row. When I graduated from the Leadership Academy, I volunteered for Public Works, and through Public Works, we managed to get a lot of new PICO poles put in town, so we're not gonna have power outages. But there's a problem with the transfer of the communication cables to the new PICO poles. So what I'm doing is I'm gonna file a formal complaint with the PUC with respect to PICO not doing their job and completing their job, leaving a dangerous situation. All right, the next thing had to do with code enforcement, what we've been working on. This is the one I sent you about Forest Avenue. I had my guy out today riding around, looking at all the bloated properties and the graffiti and all that type of stuff. And we're gonna be coming up with a movie shortly. So now we're on to the prison. Now, the reason I have a Marlin Maguire shirt on is it's another example that I want to use as an economic development for a community. Now, this is a quote. "The old jail museum was open to the public May 20, 1962. I was a junior in high school, and the subsequent centennial was just taking place." So Norristown had no worry about what was gonna happen to them in the future. Of course, now we know. 1,677 visitors from 29 states during the first month it was opened. Now, the way I look at it, there was 1,677 lunches, not only that, all the other things that go along with it. Now, at the HARP meeting, it was brought up that injustice was the reason that the county commissioner wants to tear the building down. And I say the injustice of the Marlin Maguires and what was done to the Irish and the Union up there is an example of what we need to bring out. We can't burn books. We can't cover this stuff up with injustice. And justice, as was said earlier, I think there's no help for Norristown. I really do. And it breaks my heart being my town, but it doesn't mean I'm gonna stop, doesn't mean I'm not gonna give up. I'm legendary for my patience and commitment, right? But the fact is, there is, and my understanding, and I will get into it, that any contract that's put out by a government agency has to be put out there for three bids? Like you have an accident with your car, you gotta have three estimates? Or a problem with your house, you gotta have three estimates?
Thank you.
I sent you.
Three minutes and four seconds for the record.
I am studying Arrested, the Persecution of the Irish, and Union. In fact, we're gonna go visit Jim Thorpe on Friday and find out what kind of benefit that prison was.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
You're welcome.
Giuseppe Crani-Monticelli?
I like your shoes, Mr. Waters. I like your shoes.
Do you like my shoes?
I do.
Yeah?
Yes.
That's nice. Giuseppe Crani-Monticelli. Primary Springfield Township, secondary is Concha Hocken. I also am a renter, Upper Marion's, Lower Marion's, Sheldonham, Upper Gwinnett Township. Multiple municipalities, unfortunately, never in Norristown. Maybe that's because you guys don't have food. There's no food places to go to anymore. I'm gonna talk about this prison here. I was at the last HARP meeting, and what they did of delaying the vote to fully use that 45 business days, totally correct, push this out, because we need to really make sure that every public servant knows fully what Ken's and Tom's plans are in regards to this. Because you know what? It gets to a point here where them saying, at least what Mr. Hans was saying, will just be a grass partial. So you can't tell us what are the other options, you avenues you explored for this to possibly be? You're just gonna leave it to be a grass partial? I think what they're meaning that to mean is a park, maybe an encampment. Who knows? Maybe supervise a drug, you know, with IV drug. Yeah, what are they gonna do with this? What are they gonna do? And the stone, the stone's another thing. Why is it already sold? You guys haven't made your decision, and everyone needs to know HARP's recommendation. That's just a recommendation. These public servants that you all elected in, I don't know, Tom, if you're going for reelection, but, you know, they are the ones who will have the final say if whether we preserve the injustices that this county has committed back then and still to this present day. If you tear down that building, you're not gonna have the preservation. You're gonna have a destruction of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Constitution. You're gonna have release all sorts of paranormal activity. For those that don't believe in that, you need to start looking at the documentaries with Katrina Wyman. Maybe we could get Katrina Wyman in here to investigate that, and maybe she can tell you, it's not a good idea to mess with paranormal activity. Poltergeist can happen. So you need to go ahead and leave that building there. You need to go ahead and vote in the negative when this comes before you, and if this.
Thank you, Giuseppe.
You go ahead and tear down this, tear down the PNC bank, make that a grass partial.
Denise Sabuda?
Hi, my name is Denise, 335 West Marchaux, that's our business center. I'm here just to ask you guys when you plan to have a clean day in Marshall Street? Because every day when we go, that's a stamp, Jane told me that this is the commercial district, section of Norristown, but it's super itker there. So you walk there, it's always trash, even though they pick up the trash, they're full of TV, old TVs, boxes, and all this stuff, but I think that's no good for our community. I know there's some Latino business in that area, Block 3, 5A, in Marshall, West Marchaux, but I think at least it'd be decent for you guys to see, send somebody to clean up the street. And now we get tickets all the time, we have to buy when they clean up, but, you know, our money we pay, don't worry about that, but that's at least send someone to pick up the trash. Also, on Monday mornings, if you go there, it's so horrible, full of trash, so, you know, if you're planning to have something, and we can invite our community, our community is able to go there and clean up with you guys, and we, our organization, we need this, we are planning to have a clean up day, so we are there, so we can do it together, but at least send someone. Thank you.
Thank you. Public works, thank you for that.
And then this is a person whose name I couldn't read.
Has anybody else, would anybody have any public comment that has not? You're up, sir.
Hello, my name is Dr. O'Neal, from Norristown, April 4. I've got three things for you guys to pay attention. I'm tired, I get out, my wife go to work at 6 o'clock in the morning, and when she goes outside, these guys from South America, whatever the hell they are, a bunch of, they're pissed between cars. And if you guys do anything, and when I go to work, I see them all over Norristown. They're a bunch of piss, okay? And then, they don't come to rest, they don't maintain none of the houses. And then, I got a bad knee, my wife got a bad knee, and she keepin' us about it. I spent 250 bucks for a handicap spot in front of my house, they deny, they're disgraced, they don't wanna do it. They say, oh, you need 20 feet. My house is 20 feet wide, my wife, she only got a small car parked outside. Now, tonight, two cars over the blue lines, because I'm at the blue lines in front of their house, and they jammed the bumper to bumper. I had to wait for them to move close, then I get out, okay? I mean, you're getting disgraced with these guys. And then, they got trash cans out from the house, they smell like they got dogs, they have dogs in there. You can't open a window for fresh air, because they're a bunch of piss. They got trash all over the floors, they got grass as high. I called the landlord, and the landlord don't give a damn. I don't know, he's gonna do something about it, and the chief is gonna do something about it, and then these guys, they got air-conditioned windows with plastic bags covering. They got the run and corral windows, so there must have run drugs in there, with the air con, the airbag, the crash bag flopping out in front of the windows. And my wife, I've been living in a tiny house for 51 years, never was this bad, never. I've been living in Norristown for 60 years, and Norristown's cleaning, now there's a bunch of dump, okay? Because all these trash cans outside, and they dump them all over the show, all over the street. They get, it's getting bad. Thank you. Have a good day. I'm leaving.
Yeah.
We'll move into appointments. Resolution number 23-67, appointment of Brianna Crops-Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President and Counsel. As you know, we went through an extensive search process for our first recreation director. We were fortunate in that process to end up with Ms. Brianna Crops-Hawkins as our first recreation director. She came to us from Baltimore, wanted to give her a chance to just say hello and hear a voice. She's been actually with us now for a week, and active on board, had budget meetings with and everything, so she has hit the ground running.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brianna Crops-Hawkins. I am the new Director of Recreation with Norristown Recreation and Parks. I am originally from Philadelphia, a graduate of Coppin State University as well as Drexel University. I have more than 15 years' experience within the Parks and Recreation Department. I have previously worked for Philadelphia Parks and Recreation, as well as Maryland National Capitol Parks and Planning Commission, and Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. So I come to you with a lot of experience, and I look forward to moving the department forward.
Thank you very much. That, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-67?
So moved.
Second. Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it, resolution passes. Congratulations. Buildings and Codes, Historical Architectural Review Board, September 2023.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, before you, is a request to approve or deny the Historical Architectural Review Board applications which were received, reviewed, and recommended for approval by HARP for September 2023. As you all know, the Norristown HARP receives applications on a monthly basis for exterior repairs, alterations, demolitions, and renovations for properties located in Norristown's historic districts. Those applications are reviewed by the HARP members and to confirm if the repair, alteration, demolition, and renovation work is in compliance with our municipal ordinance. The HARP has reviewed the applications and have approved, either as submitted or modified as mentioned on the COAs, for the following properties: 420 West Erie Street, 422 West Erie Street, 512 Noble Street, 515 Hawes Avenue, 524 Sweet Street, 825 DeKalb Street, and 1,007 West Main Street.
Once again, I'll make note that the Old Erie Street Prison is not in this HARP court, correct?
That is correct, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, do I have a motion to approve the Historical Architectural Review Board of September 2023? So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. HARP passes. Police, Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-four.
Thank you, Council President. Council, before you, is a Resolution twenty-three sixty-four, request for council to approve promotional list for corporal and sergeant for the police department. Norristown Police Department utilized Safe City Solutions to administer a promotional exam for the purposes of creating an eligibility list for the promotion of corporal and sergeant within the police department. Test was administered on June ninth, two thousand twenty-three, with all candidates passing. Oral examinations were then conducted by the same company. All results, including time and service and educational credits, were forwarded to the Civil Service Commission of the municipality. The commission met and certified the attached lists in September twentieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-four?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution passes. Moving on to Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-five.
Thank you, Council President. Council, before you, is a request for council to approve the two thousand twenty-three JAG award sharing between Norristown and Pottstown Borough. There's an intergovernmental agreement between Norristown and Pottstown with a memorandum and memorandum understanding to use and allocate certain Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant and JAG program that we recently awarded between the two municipalities. Norristown Police Department jointly applied for the two thousand twenty-three grant that was awarded, the JAG grant, along with Pottstown Borough, for a total of forty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, of which Pottstown has been allocated twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and Norristown has been allocated nineteen thousand and one dollars. Memorandum and understanding must also be approved by council as the amount being allocated to Pottstown is twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-five?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution passes. We'll move on to Finance, Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-six.
Mr. President, we are seeking approval for the two thousand twenty-four minimum municipal obligation for the pension funds for police, fire, and non-uniform. The MMOs are calculated by an actuary for the pension plans and is funded by a combination of state grants and member contributions and the general fund. The numbers before you, total three point five million dollars for the, again, the police, firefighters, labor, and management funds. So we are seeking approval for the two thousand twenty-four payments and include this in the two thousand twenty-four budget.
Thank you. Council, is there any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-six?
Second.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution passes. Moving on to Mr. Jones, request of council to approve an MOA between the municipality of Norristown and the firefighters' local union, two-three-three-five.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. In your package was this memorandum of agreement. As you know, we are currently in negotiations with the fire department, the firefighters' union, the police union, and as well as Ask Me and the labor union this year on their various contracts. One of the things, that dynamics that happens as it relates to the firefighters' contract is typically they wait until the police contract is negotiated in order to have, undertake their negotiation. We expect the police negotiation to be before you before the end of the year and as typical when this happens, the firefighters and the municipality will agree to extend the current contract until such time as that's negotiated. The only change that will be, that this will entail is that whatever salary percentage that's negotiated for the police will be the salary percentage that will be on the table and will be given to the fire department as well. So with that, just, and they have unanimously agreed in their membership to do this, we're recommending that we enter into this extension for another year until that negotiation is completed.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the MOA?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. MOA is approved. Move on to Public Works. Request of Municipal Council to approve Ordinance twenty-three dash zero-seven. Mr. Adenaboe.
Evening, Mr. President and Council. The purpose of this ordinance is to approve a reduction in speed from twenty-five, from thirty-five miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour between, along the car, between Forness and the Johnson Highway. As a matter of fact, this was a recommendation from the Department of Transportation and is believed that a reduction will accurately reduce accidents along the car, especially the Carver Brown where there has been an average of one accident per month this year. This ordinance has been properly advertised and we are now asking the council to approve this ordinance.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Ordinance twenty-three dash zero-seven?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero-seven passes. Departmental reports. We will start off with police. Chief Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the month of September, we see three thousand three hundred and forty-five calls per service, which was a five percent decrease from last year, so we're slowing down a little bit. We're at a one percent decrease overall in our serious crimes as compared to last year, but we had a nineteen percent increase over twenty-twenty-one last year. So my goal of reaching under seven hundred Part One crimes for the year is probably not gonna be met. We're a little higher than that, but we're still trying for that. We had a high of ten percent decrease in June, July, August, and September were very busy for us, so that got worn away. Much of this we're attributing to the spike in the TikTok challenge, which is the thing that goes around on TikTok to steal keys in Hyundai's. Probably got sixty-eight at this point throughout the town. About forty of those were just attempts, which we're actually categorizing as a theft of vehicle because they're trying to steal it. This is part of the biggest problem last year was vehicles running and unoccupied. This year, it's parked locked vehicles and they're breaking into them, trying to steal them. They're successful with some, but Kia's fixed, Kia and Hyundai's fixed their technical problems. We've given out two hundred and fifty free steering locks, done social media blast, but the problem continues and we believe most of it's based with juveniles. It's a challenge for them. It's a game. Shootings for gun violence. I'm extremely proud of what we've done this year. We've only had one fatal shooting, which was ruled self-defense versus four last year at this time, and four non-fatal shootings versus fourteen at this time last year. So that is seventy-five percent reduction over the gun violence that we had last year. So far this year, we've taken almost one hundred guns off the street with the implementation now of ShotSpotter, which started on the twentieth. We've had an increase in shots fired incidents, but that's only because the ShotSpotter activations. We've had seven activations since it went live. Only two had nine-one-one callers. So we go back to, the whole reason for this technology is people aren't calling this in. Twenty-eight percent right now of shots fired being called in, and that's only because of the small amount that we have now. I expect that number to be a lot lower. Robberies, we had a nineteen percent increase. We had a little bit of spike over the summer. Some of the things we're starting to see, though, some of the reports are false, but we can't charge with false reports yet for whatever reason or giving us the wrong information through an investigation. We see a robbery never occurred. Domestic violence incidents are about equal as compared to last year. There's been a significant decrease in repeat victimizations. Most of the serious domestic violence are first-time contacts where we didn't miss an opportunity to get services involved with the people that were having the problems. We've currently doubled our participation in community events as compared to last year. We're at a hundred and fifty-three versus eighty-two. We had twenty-one events in August, so we're extremely busy with that, getting out and meeting with the community. Our traffic accidents have increased almost thirty-eight percent compared to last year. The biggest is struck pedestrians or bikes, which is a seventy-eight percent increase over twenty-twenty-two. With the help from PennDOT, Main Street from Markley to Buttonwood and Markley Street from Main to Marshall is the main problem area. And I've gone out there personally several times, back today before coming down here. Pedestrians are not using crosswalks. They are walking between cars and cutting across lanes of traffic. In fact, a guy probably about seventy-five, walking with a cane, slowly crossed over the nine-hundred block of West Main Street in front of me and stopped the traffic. Luckily, everybody stopped for him. But this is one of the biggest problems, that the pedestrians and bike riders are just not paying attention. We've increased our traffic details by forty-nine percent as well as increased the issuance of traffic citations by forty-three percent, which will hopefully decrease the aggressive driving in town. And on a side note, we did a couple of traffic details on DeKalb Street, which was monitored. Interestingly, during one of the monitoring, about eight hundred cars were counted based on a small period of time, and there were cars that went by and only four cars went about thirty-five miles an hour. The second detail, not one car was speeding over thirty-five miles an hour, so I'm very heartened by that, but we had put up electronic signage and we put out social media blasts that we were gonna be out there, so people were listening. Non-fatal overdose races, overdose rates increased in August by thirty-three percent. Fatal overdose decreased fifty percent, which is a good sign. The increase in non-fatal overdose is linked to the increase in the unhoused population with many being reported at the transportation center and in and around the encampments. Finally, we're currently have three sworn vacancies within the police department and five professional staff vacancies as far as personnel go.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Yes, I do, Chief. You mentioned the ShotSpotter. When you say activations, is that, is just the setup of them or when you say activations, are you meaning a shot went off and it activated?
A shot went off and we were notified.
And from that, did that lead to any arrests, person of interest? What comes after that once?
No arrests. Four of them were unfounded at this point because they couldn't find any shell casings. Two happened in yards with grass around, with several camels, we couldn't find any shell casings. One happened around woods. Could have been in the woods. We couldn't locate specifically anything. One of the things that we're theorizing with this is there's a revolver involved where there's not gonna be a shell casing injected. There was nobody hitting any of them, so there's no victim per se, no calls on any of them either. So we're able to at least get out there and if we can collect evidence, we could possibly link and put it through the Ivan system that the county has now and possibly link that to a gun that was used in another crime and hopefully put something together. So there's been no prosecution to any of them yet.
Any other questions? Thank you. Chief O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Municipal Council, your operational summary for the month of August for the fire department. Year-to-date summary, nine hundred and ten emergency responses. The average response time is four minutes and fifty-two seconds. Our busiest timeframe is Tuesdays around four PM. We've conducted eight hundred and fifty-two training sessions for the year, which equates to three thousand two hundred and fifty-three man-hours. This year, we've had two firefighter injuries, two civilian injuries, and zero civilian casualties. We've completed two hundred and eighty-eight fire inspections, a hundred and ninety-four public education projects. We've visited eight hundred and seventy-three homes to install smoke detectors. We've installed two hundred and forty-three carbon and smoke detectors at homes. And that is it.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Thanks, Chief. Mr. Singh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, I have a few updates. First is back in September two thousand twenty-two, we had our five-year Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry Accessibility Audit. We just received a report earlier, or late last month, and there were some projects that the LNI inspectors went on to, to do a field verification to ensure that the accessibility code is administered and enforced correctly. There were some findings on their report, in particular for one property, they had some, not violations necessarily, but things that they said that the municipality should be more observant about. I just wanted to share that those things that the LNI inspectors had found were actually done after the fact, once we're done with our inspections and the tenant has occupied the space, they go and they make modifications and alter the space to however their needs are. So a few of those things aren't necessarily applicable or due to our inspections, it's just after the fact, people alter their space. But that report was sent to President LaPera as well as Municipal Administrator Jones and at the next meeting, I'm actually planning on doing a more formal update for municipal council regarding some of the initiatives and programs that the department has implemented over the last year, including the lead pain inspections. We have some great updates that we want to share with council and the residents as well as sharing with council the significant increase of rental inspections that we've been able to perform over the past year. So I'm gonna have some more detailed information regarding that. But for tonight, the other updates I have is we do have currently three vacancies for inspector positions, which we are diligently working on getting filled. And the only other two updates I have is some, later this week, we're gonna have our ISO B-SX assessment and evaluation completed. I can't believe it's already been five years for that. The last time we had it done was in two thousand nineteen and when we went through that exercise with ISO, our classification for the municipality was increased by two grades in residential and commercial and we're confident that we're gonna do better again this year and that's really gonna help our property owners, especially when it comes time to insuring their properties. So we have that evaluation happening later this week. And the last update I have is we are in the process of mailing out the two thousand twenty-four rental licenses. We started that last Friday and we're diligently working on getting that completed and by the end of this week, all of those license applications, renewals will be sent out. That way they can obtain their two thousand twenty-four licenses. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.